All right, so let's call the meeting to order. I'd ask everybody to please turn your cellphones off. We clearly have a quorum. We only need 40 for a quorum. We clearly have made that. We're going to have a pledge of allegiance. And it's going to be led by Alicia Greco. Return of service, Town Clerk.
Constable William De Mayo. I attest that the inhabitants of the town of Newbury, who were qualified to vote, were properly notified and warned of the date, the time, and the location of this meeting.
And to do an introduction of the people that are here. Board of Selectmen, Chair Alicia Greco, Vice Chair J.R. Colby, Clerk Dana Packer, Geraldine Hebe, not here. She is, oh great. Sorry, I missed you, sorry, sorry, I missed you. What's the matter with me? I apologize. And Jeff Walker. Finance Committee. Chair is Erica Jacobson. Vice Chair is Marshall Justerson, Joseph Ali, Gene Case, Tom Howard, Susan Noes, Frank Visconti. Town Clerk Leslie Haley. Planning Director Martha Taylor. Fire Chief Doug Janverin. Chief of Police is here also. Yeah. So also now, we need to get the approval of the town to let people who are not residents speak. And those people will be Lisa Mead, Town Council, Tracy Blaze, Town Administrator, John Lucy, Chief of Police, James Sarette, DPW Director, Matthew Cooper, IT Director. So I would ask for a vote. All in favor of... Just say aye, all in favor, please say aye on letting these people speak.
Aye!
opposed? Thank you. Just talk about the rules here and procedures. First of all, what we've talked about is somebody who is presenting a warrant would be a five-minute allowance for time. However, this is an issue, obviously, with the turnout that a lot of people are interested in. And the gentleman who's going to do the presentation did such a good job last time. We're going to give him 10 minutes. And if, let me make it clear on this. If it appears there still needs to be more time and there's not a lot of repeating going on, I will honor that. People who are coming up to add something to it or to make a comment on it, please try to keep it to two minutes. There'll be a timer up here to give you an idea of how long you've been speaking, which is sometimes difficult to determine. So that's our goal. Now, that's not a firm rule yet, but we may get to that, we'll see. Uh, let's see. Oh, this is just a general comment that I've always made. Let's be courteous to each other. And we have been, I have to say we have been. Everybody is here has a passionate feeling about this issue. Let's respect each other. Thank you. Okay, I want to make a motion to waive the reading of the warrant and allow each article to be summarized instead. We have to vote for that. All in favor?
Aye!
opposed? Thank you. Turning Technologies, you want to explain how this works?
Good evening, folks. I'm Matt Cooper, the IT Manager, and I'm going to be filling in for the turning folks this evening. For those of you who've done this before, it's a lot more of the same. One for yes, two for no. For those of you who are new to this, those little clickers you were issued when you came to the door are a remote confidential voting tool that will read up here and tabulate up on the screen as you do it. I'm going to throw a test question up in a moment just to make sure everyone's remotes are working. And once we're cool with that, we may proceed. We'll start with something relatively easy. Is it hot enough for you today? Okay? In just a second, a countdown timer will show in the lower left-hand corner, counting down from 15. That'll be the standard allowance for voting for tonight's session. As soon as it goes, let me know what you think. Go ahead and vote now.
I don't know, did you announce we've got 15 seconds to vote?
All right, and the overwhelming majority agree with me? Too hot.
Okay. Yours isn't working? We don't want any heart attacks. Not that big a hurry. Justin, you want to make, read the motion?
Sure. Come on. Okay. How long is this microphone cord? My name's Justin Londergan. I want to motion to see if the town will vote to alter the existing way known as Larkin Road at its point... Do you want me to read the whole thing? ...at its point of connection or within 500 yards of its point of connection with the adjoining municipality of Georgetown, which excludes which excludes motor vehicle traffic from the way by the installation and operation of a safety gate and, if so voted, compel the town of Newbury in accordance with the provision of Mass. General Law, Section 82... Excuse me, Chapter 82, Section 1, to A) give written notice of such alteration of such public way to the Chief Executive Officer of the municipality of Georgetown and B) hold a public hearing and provide public notice of said public hearing by publication for each of the two weeks preceding such hearing in a newspaper of general circulation in the municipality of Georgetown and C) to seek the written consent of the Chief Executive Officer of the municipality of Georgetown to such alteration of such public way. If within 90 days of the date of such hearing there is no consent by the Chief Executive Officer of the municipality of Georgetown to further compel the town of Newbury to make a written request to the Administrator for highways in the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to approve of the said alteration.
Somebody needs a second, who is one of the petitioners? Okay, thank you. Okay, Justin, time for you to go forward.
Okay, I'm going to try and go as fast as I can. Dick said 10 minutes, I'm going to try and stick to 10 minutes. So thank you all for coming, first of all. I know we may not always see eye to eye, but we are neighbors and I believe we share a common bond in our love for this town and our commitment to democracy. Thank you, all of you. This is an awesome, awesome turnout. I want to summarize why we're here tonight. We are here tonight to ask town officials to honor the vote that already passed at April's annual town meeting. Tonight's article again asks to begin a process to install a safety gate at the Larkin Road Bridge over Wheeler Brook at the Georgetown Boundary Line. Oh, slide, next slide. Go back. Go back, okay. Future steps likely involve Georgetown and possibly the Massachusetts DOT. I want to also discuss what we are not asking for. There's been a lot of information out there and so I want to clarify what we are not asking for. We are not asking to discontinue Larkin Road. We are not asking to abandon Larkin Road. We are not asking for a gated community. We are not asking for Larkin Road to become a private way. We are not asking for funding. Funding for the gate has already been approved and budgeted. We are not asking for sidewalks before places like Central Street and other streets get them first. We are certainly not asking for a fiscally insane road widening project. We are not asking to close a road that's open. Slide. In 2015, the town changed Larkin Road from road closed to dead end. Slide. Larkin Road was a cut through for Route 95 access for Georgetown residents and trucks headed to the Georgetown Industrial Park. The bridge failed on Larkin Road in 2014 and has been closed since. Large portions of Larkin Road were previously unpaved dirt until very recently. By 2015, Newbury erected a dead end sign at the entrance to Larkin Road. Half of the street's residents bought their homes after that dead end sign went up. A developer is currently building 10 homes off Larkin in Georgetown. Georgetown told the developer he could build his houses but only if he paid to replace the failed bridge in Newbury. Slide. This is a letter from the Georgetown Select Board Chairman to the town of Newbury. I know you can't read the fine print. Anyone who wants a copy, I'll give it to you, but let me read the relevant section. This is dated 9/27/21. Doug Dawes, Chair of Georgetown Board, says, "As the Larkin Bridge is located in Newbury, Mass., and the decision for repairing and reopening the bridge is a decision solely in the hands of the Newbury Select Board, the Georgetown Board will support whatever decision the Newbury Board comes to." This is an email from Doug Dawes just two days ago where he reaffirms Georgetown's commitment to defer to Newbury. This was sent to a citizen in Georgetown who also opposes the road reopening. And it reads, "Dear Sher... Hi Cheryl. Thank you for reaching out and we are aware of the parish road residents' thoughts regarding this public way. In the end, this is really a Newbury decision. Douglas W. Dawes, Chairman, Georgetown Board of Selectmen." Concerned citizens began attending Newbury and Georgetown meetings in spring 2021 expressing strong opposition to through traffic and concerns about safety. Citizens in both Newbury and Georgetown overwhelmingly oppose through traffic, this is neighborhood citizens, based first in an online petition that had 351 signatures and later in an in-person petition which culminated in this meeting tonight of 306 signatures. Object... Excuse me. Objections to reopening Larkin Road were by far the most discussed citizen-led topic in Newbury Select Board meetings in 2021 and thus far 2022. Concerned Newbury citizens requested a meeting with police, fire, and town officials in early 2022 and presented a safety gate solution with the gate vendor. We brought the gate vendor to that meeting. The Select Board ultimately turned the matter over to the will of the people at annual town meeting. At town meeting in April, the article to install a safety gate passed by a two-to-one vote. Since town meeting, town officials have acknowledged that the citizens approved the $20,000 budgetary spend for a gate. But town officials chose to ignore the article's pledge to the town act in relation thereto on the installation of the gate itself, calling the vote a non-binding referendum. Town leaders claimed instead we needed to return to another town meeting to have another vote to alter the road. So here we are, again, based on guidance from the town. Even though everyone, I believe, and my neighbors believe, at April 20 town meeting knew that our vote was to alter the road with the installation of a gate. Emergency vehicles have had zero bridge access on Larkin Road for eight years. They have been unable to traverse the bridge, it was collapsed. If reopening this bridge was public safety critical or required as a public way, why hasn't the town done it immediately? This past eight years confirms that Newbury does not need Larkin Bridge at all. We totally support emergency vehicle access. A safety gate allows instant access for emergency vehicles but prevents unsafe through traffic. Safety gates are reliable and used throughout Massachusetts in the United States in mission-critical locations: airports, nuclear power plants, military bases, critical government facilities, unsafe roads, and I believe possibly coming soon to Plum Island at the proposed emergency extension on 12th Street as well. So, safety gate also saves taxpayers money. Funding for gate purchase and installation is approved and budgeted and we believe it can be 100% covered by ARPA funds. The annual maintenance costs are under $400. The developer has volunteered his machines and labor to install the gate. Limiting Larkin Road and Bridge to emergency vehi... Excuse me, Bridge, to emergency vehicles will drastically reduce ongoing bridge and road maintenance costs, which will be borne by Newbury taxpayers. That is one option. The other option is the town can continue to spend our taxpayer money to disregard the will of its own citizenry. Special Town Meetings can keep going on because the Select Board doesn't want to honor prior votes. We can increase police presence on what's now a dead end. We can widen the road at massive taxpayer expense instead of prioritizing other, more important projects like sidewalks in critical areas around town. And we can wear hugely increased wear and tear from Georgetown traffic, which will be paid for with your tax dollars. This has become wasteful and we believe what's going on here does not add up. I want to briefly discuss the article itself because I know it's hard to understand. Tonight's article was reviewed by our legal counsel and is in full compliance with Massachusetts law. The article quotes verbatim Massachusetts law to leave no room for ambiguity. That law confirms a town can alter a road without discontinuing it or abandoning it. Any suggestion that Larkin Road, a dead end right now, needs to be discontinued or abandoned to install a gate is not accurate. Did the town go through two town meetings when it put up the road closed sign on Larkin in 2014? Dead ended Larkin in 2015? Closed Green Street to through traffic in 1998? Made Church Street a one-way? No, because the town wanted to do those things. There's no room for ambiguity. I know you can't read this, but anyone who wants to compare them, I will be happy to share. Our article language is word for word Massachusetts law. So through traffic brings no benefit to Newbury. Opening Larkin Bridge, dead ended nearly a decade ago, brings no benefit. But it would put our community and children at risk while adding costs to Newbury taxpayers. Our article improves emergency vehicle access. Right now, there is none. It keeps our community safe and it saves taxpayer money in the long term. But we also believe at this point this has become bigger than Larkin Road. The bigger question to the residents on Larkin Road at this point is, why are officials elected to represent us fighting us so hard on this? I was forwarded an email just yesterday, excuse me, two days ago. This is one day old. From the town's attorney, where according to her, our votes at town meeting are advisory. They are advisory and they can be ignored by the Select Board at the Select Board's discretion. I quote her. I would add, if you are speaking with Mr. Londergan, that the use of the words compel in this article tonight will be deemed advisory as the statute gives that authority to the Select Board and the town meeting may not usurp that authority. I want to make a note right now that we put compel in the article because our last vote, we feel, was ignored. So is everyone here comfortable with this Select Board believing it can selectively ignore our votes at town meeting? Remember, citizens are the legislative body of Newbury. We are not advisors. We are citizens and we are voters. From Newbury's Town Administrator Act of 2008, "The administration of all the fiscal, prudential, and municipal affairs of the town shall remain vested in the executive branch headed by the Board of Selectmen and the legislative powers of the town shall remain vested in a town meeting open to all voters." Local legislation definition means any ordinance, motion, resolution, amendment, regulation, or rule adopted by a local governmental entity. Tonight is about honoring the vote. It's about honoring the law and it's about respecting the will of our people. This is about sending a clear message that our votes matter. They cannot be ignored or dismissed when they don't suit the needs of the people who are in charge right now. You may not care about Larkin Road at all. I'm sure most of you don't and I don't blame you if you don't. But how will you feel? How will you feel if next year or the year after, you and your fellow citizens spend a year in dialogue with this town, activate and do work on an issue that's really, really important to you? You come to town meeting and you persevere and you get... You secure the petition and the vote and the Select Board decides to ignore, to ignore your vote, to ignore your pleas for help and dialogue for over a year. If you are as horrified as my neighbors and I are, please join us tonight to restore and protect our democracy for everyone. Please vote aye tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you. Okay. We are going to have Erica Jacobson, who's the Chair of the Finance Committee, is going to lay out what the procedure is and what all of the things that have to happen before we can move on Larkin Road. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm prepared, I have prepared remarks tonight. I will be reading from them because I want to make sure that all of the words I use have been chosen carefully with forethought. I want to first thank you all very much for coming to the special town meeting to address the citizens' petition. I thank each and every one of you for making the time and coming out to participate in the democratic process here in Newbury. Core, one of my core values is a dedication to democracy and a responsibility to public service. Central to that is an understanding of how things must be done within the confines of municipal, state, federal laws, and regulations. The Finance Committee does not have a formal role in tonight's meeting as there are no articles speaking to expenditures. So why, you may ask, am I standing before you? I have been asked by Select Board Chair Ms. Greco to walk through the path to a gate. The document seen? Should be seen up on the screen? Great, also hand it out. If you did not get one, look to a neighbor, I will hand you mine. This is something that we wanted to share. We knew that sharing it on the screen would be small print, meaning that there are handouts for everyone. As such, I also want to be perfectly clear. I am not advocating one way or another on tonight's action. I'm just here to clarify why we are here and the next steps as set forth in Mass. Statute. So step one. The motion made at annual town meeting passed. The motion was to appropriate the son of $20,000 from free cash to fund the purchase and installation of a public safety gate at Georgetown/Larkin Road Bridge. That motion was moved and the appropriation was approved by the majority of voters in attendance. After that vote, it was communicated that there was a legal liability to the town without following the proper items listed in Massachusetts General Law. Mr. Londergan referenced the article, the letter that was sent. The motion in front of us tonight also references that. The pieces of this is that if the residents of the town of Newbury believe a gate across Larkin Road is necessary, the red citizens may wish to petition the town pursuant to General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, to discontinue the public way which would extinguish the town's responsibility and liability with respect to Larkin Road. Town meeting is authorized to alter or discontinue a town way pursuant to General Law, Chapter 82, Section 21. Further, Massachusetts courts have held that the installation of a gate allowing for only selected access on a public way is tantamount to discontinuing the public way and may create a nuisance. And therefore, the alteration or discontinuance, if that is the intent, must follow the statutory process set forth in General Law, Chapter 82, Section 1. Otherwise, the installation of a gate without following this may result in future liability for the town. Since then, by way of the citizens' petition, we are now at step two. Start of the blue. What the path... And by the way, the motion is correct. Is that it specifically mentions all of the sections of Chapter 82, Section 1. So we need, according to that, we need a vote of town meeting is required to alter or discontinue a road. That is needed to move forward down this path. On this document, the green arrows are the path to a gate. Please note, there are places on this with red arrows. They indicate a path where the process may be held up or stopped altogether. So tonight, we will be moving into Section 3. The motion, if made and approved at the Newbury Town Meeting, the Select Board would have to inform Georgetown officials. That's one. Step four, it goes hand in hand, is that Newbury Select Board would have to hold a public hearing. Please note, a public hearing will be held in Newbury. It will be advertised as a public hearing in all of the correct manners. This, so there will be another meeting where this will be discussed again. It's not because anybody is not following the will of the town, it's because we're following the law to hold a public hearing. Please note, this public hearing is not a town meeting. So there will be no votes taken. And since it is a public hearing in Newbury, Newbury residents, Georgetown residents, voters, officials would be able to speak and voice their opinions on this matter. At the same time, there's also something that rests within Georgetown. Georgetown has 90 days. This is part of step five, if you're following along. Georgetown has 90 days to set written notice that it concurs with the decision. If they agree, we move directly to step six and the gate can be installed. That is the path right along the top, green arrows. Don't know where this is. It's on your sheet. However, if Georgetown does not respond within 90 days or responds that they do not agree or if they tell us they're outright opposed to the discontinuance or alteration, the Select Board may appeal to the Administrator of Highways for the DOT. That's the red arrow down. Then it goes to that Massachusetts Administrator of Highways to approve or not. That's where you get down to the final red arrow. If that Administrator, it stops there. That's all of the pieces of the process. If they approve it, then it comes through and the gate can be installed. In conclusion, I want to be clear. I'm not advocating one way or another on tonight's action. I'm just here to clarify the steps in the process. And since we've imposed a number of questions about the implications, I am now turning to Lisa Mead, our Town Counsel, who will walk us through a few pieces of key information about legal determinations and help guide the discussion. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for bringing your children. I know cutting out on a night is not easy and I thank you for being here and being part of this process. Please, as we go forth tonight, be kind. Assume positive intent by all of your fellow residents this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Erica, and through you, Mr. Moderator, Lisa Mead, Town Counsel. And the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the Town Administrator has been asked a number of questions over the last couple of weeks relative to some key terms and the location of the road and the meaning of the motion and the article. So I thought I would also just go through as factually as I can those questions that we've been asked. So just to give everybody context, we have a map from our GIS system here from the Merak Valley Planning Associate. And if you could run, at the bottom of the bottom-left corner is Georgetown is Georgetown, and you'll see the Newberry line and the Georgetown line. Larkin Road runs parallel with that line, and down where the P in Parish Road starts, we're going to blow this up in a minute, is approximately where the culvert is. If you could go to the next slide, please. So here's a blow up of that, and again, this is approximate, you know, we're not, I'm not a surveyor and engineer, but you can see where the culvert is. You can see Larkin Road in the town of Newberry, and then it crosses over and becomes Parish Road in the town of Georgetown. And so that's important because of two things. One is the language of the motion and the article, and two is the requirement of the statute. And the reason it's important is because this process is involved because the road of the proposed gate is within 500 yards of the town of Georgetown. So it's a more involved process than if the town of Newberry were just to discontinue a road on its own that is not within 500 yards of another municipality. So, next slide, please. So the next question is, we hear the words alteration and discontinuance being thrown around, and so what is the difference? Next slide. So I'll read you this. An alteration under the statute is where a road is altered by a town meeting action, that portion of altered is no longer a portion of the official layout and becomes discontinued without separate action. And so to give you an idea, typically, you would see, let's say there's a hairpin turn in a road that the town wants to correct, and so they're going to do a new layout and they draw a new plan and the road is straight, and the town meeting alters the road and adopts the new layout. The former section of the road is automatically discontinued by that new alteration. That's typically an alteration. The alteration being proposed here is the installation of the gate which affects everything beyond the gate. So that's an alteration where the action automatically, those parts of the road that were altered, becomes discontinued. What is a discontinuance? A discontinuance of a town way eliminates the town's responsibility for maintenance of the way and liability for damage for use of the way, but allows for the continued right of public passage. If there is an actual discontinuance, the town would still own the fee interest in the road unless the town abandoned the road. So in my hairpin turn example, the hairpin section would become discontinued, the town would still own it, but would not have to maintain it. In this example, that's before you this evening, that area that is altered and no longer used would still belong to the town, would still be open to passage, maybe, we'll talk about that in a minute, but would not have to be maintained by the town. Next slide, please. So I think some of the confusion for some of the questions that have come to us are by the language of the motion. So here, the motion proposal is to change, is not to change the official layout like I've described, rather to install a gate, and it says, alter Larkin Road at its point of connection or within 500 yards of its point of connection with the adjoining municipality of Georgetown, which excludes motor vehicle traffic from the way by the installation and operation of a safety gate. So Mr. Landergan will explain later, but the motion basically gives the town the right to place this gate within 500 yards of the connection according to this motion, but it's not clear. It does also exclude all motor vehicle traffic. It doesn't take an exception in the motion that's been presented for emergency vehicles. It excludes all motor vehicle traffic. So the question is, if it's an alteration, is the road being affected, no longer available as a public way? The answer is, it's not a public way. That section that's being discontinued, it is still owned by the public. But this is where, as Erica's pointed out, the liability question is important. If you put the gate across and you don't properly discontinue it, then the town does have liability for a nuisance and problems with the gate. If it's discontinued pursuant to this action, that liability would go away if the process were followed all the way to the end. Next slide, please. So depending on the intent and effect, the town could be responsible to maintain the road up to the gate wherever that might be, which is unclear, and so we need to clarify that somehow or some way so that the town doesn't end up in a dispute about where the discontinuance is. And as I said earlier, the courts have held that the installation of a gate alone for selected access on a public way is tantamount to a discontinuance of the public way and may create a nuisance. That's why this action is important. Therefore, the discontinuance, if that is the intent, must follow the statutory process as has been laid out. I would like to make one other point. Mr. Landergan said that, in fact, the motion follows specifically the statute, not quite, obviously, the beginning of the motion is the motion to move, the second part relative to holding a public hearing and advising the town of Georgetown and waiting 90 days, those are all part of the statute. I do disagree with Mr. Landergan. The action to compel the Board of Selectmen to then advise potentially mass DOT actually is written as may in the statute, and therefore, because the statute gives out authority to the Board of Selectmen, town meeting can't compel them to do that, but obviously, there's a process to follow, and the Board of Selectmen and the town will take that action. But I did want to make that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Pretty impressed with all three of these presentations. Thank you very much. Now we're going to hear from John Lucy, Chief of Police, and we're going to hear from Doug Janber, our Fire Chief.
Yes, sir. How you doing, folks? When this all started a while back, my sole focus and my responsibility as a public safety official is to reflect on implications of public safety. And there was a lot of evaluation, a lot of discussion with the petitioners and with everybody involved, and an assessment was made as your public safety official, which concludes the following. I did a little bit of a look back, too. I know there was a lot of concerns about increased traffic. I know there's concerns about traffic that might be going too fast on that road, and the analysis that I was able to provide to you folks tonight is a look back to 1998. Now, I only can look back to 98 because that's what my database can give me. And so that's 23 years back. And I'm going to speak to you on traffic. I'm not going to talk to you about fire response or medical response because that's not my wheelhouse, but I can't speak to you what seems to be the bigger concern about the traffic implications of the closure or reopening of this culvert. In a 23-year look back, and that would be from 1998 to the end of 2014, there were 24 incidences, 24 of motor vehicle complaint. Now, that means self-initiated would be the officers had 17 violations that they reacted to, whether it was a verbal warning, a citation, any infraction that the officer observed and dealt with. There were seven that were initiated by the residents. So that would be, hey, we have somebody operating inappropriately on our way. Can you come address this? And that total is 24 in 23 years. Since the closure, January 15th to present, there have been three self-initiated, again, officer-initiated events, traffic-related, and also two dispatched to respond to complaints. So five incidences since its closure. Now, what that means to me is, you know, what's the benefit of opening this road, of making this road accessible again for public safety? The benefit is, I know that the superintendent of school has been contacted in getting the bus route to accommodate Larkin Road. I see the kids standing at the end of Larkin Road and Central Street. That's where they have to walk up because the buses can't traverse that road without being able to turn around. So the superintendent has already committed to getting the buses to go down there. So that makes it safer for the children, in my opinion, as your public safety official. The other thing, those numbers that I just spoke to you folks about, that represents a 30 mile an hour speed limit. I'm very, very confident that with the reduction of that speed limit, to be more consistent with what's going on in Georgetown, 25 miles an hour, with education to the traveling public that might be going through there, and with a strong presence to set the tone, a 25 mile an hour speed limit stands to reason, is going to reduce that 24 incidences in 23 years to a lesser number. So it seems to me the benefit of unhindered access to the full length of Larkin Road for any emergency, and I have to think about the what-ifs, folks. I can't go by the what-ises all the time. My job is reactionary in a lot of cases, in most cases, and as the Fire Chief, I'm sure will say the same thing. So as much as it might be unpleasant to talk about the what-ifs, I have to introduce the what-ifs. And if it means our response time is lessened by 30 seconds, 45 seconds, 10 seconds, the what-ifs of what could be going on at that emergency in that timeframe is not acceptable to me, to wait for a gate, to have unhindered, you know, to have a hindered access to that emergency, and that goes both ways. That's whether Georgetown's coming to help us out or help you folks out, or us trying to get to our residents on the other side of that culvert. I adamantly oppose any hindered access to any area in this town when it can be avoided. That's my position as your public safety official. I have no dog in this fight as far as a resident, and I appreciate the spirit of where this is coming from. My job here tonight is to express very, very clearly that as your public safety official, it's a bad idea when you don't have to hinder access to do it anyway. Thank you.
Good evening, Doug Janber, Fire Chief. I just echo what Chief Lucy said about the unhindered access. Like the chief does, I worry about the what-ifs, and I just worry about what happens if we are repeated by the gate. You know, I don't live on Larkin Road either, I really have no skin in the game either personally, but I do worry about the responses that if we're hindered by 30 seconds or a minute or the gate doesn't work, that we are delayed. And this will be a standstill in the Fire Department.
Okay. First of all, I want to make sure that everybody understands, I don't want anybody leaving here with a question, not totally understanding what the issues are and what everybody, because there are people here that can answer those questions. So let's start with that. And if you'd like to speak, we're trying to keep that to two minutes. And Mitch, would you line up at the microphone, please? And, no. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Good evening. I'm Marshall Jespersen. I live at 169 Elm Street in Byfield, and I speak to you as a citizen of the town, not on any of the town committees. So at our annual meeting, I listened to the heartfelt presentation by Justin Landergan. In short, he was concerned about children's safety, and he felt that increased traffic would equate to an increased danger for the kids. No one wants to see any child at a higher risk of being struck by a car. Who would not agree? And so the article passed. But I got to thinking, there's a flaw in the argument as presented. You see, there's no real reduction in total traffic in the area, and so it follows that it's safer for Larkin Road children. It means the danger that they avoid must be transferred to children not on Larkin Road. Since there's no reduction in traffic and arguably a potential increase in the distance traveled, the total potential for a child being injured by a vehicle is unchanged. It is reduced on Larkin Road, then it must be increased elsewhere. It would be unconscionable to favor one part of the population of our town in favor of another. Therefore, the article should be voted down. But wait, there's more. I had not had the historical information before Mr. Landergan's presentation, but it raised the question of how safe are our children and pedestrians in general on the road to Newberry? So I checked it out. The answer is very, very safe. In the past 50 years, the only Newberry child who was killed in a motor vehicle accident was in the car, not as a pedestrian. 50 years, 50 years is a long time, and I think you will agree with me. It shows that the highways and byways of Newberry are extremely safe. There is simply no way to improve on the safety record of the past 50 years. When you get down to zero, you can't go any lower. Mr. Landergan's expression of heartfelt concern for the safety of the children on Larkin Road is, at best, misguided. The highways and byways of Newberry are already safe, so that denying passage on what has been a temporarily closed road would not increase the town's safety one little bit.
Marshall, could you wrap it up, please?
I'm going to do the best I can. There have been people who have taken a little longer, but I'll do it. So, history shows that the roads in Newberry are extremely safe, and that this change from a dead-end road to a through road will not change the already near-zero-risked children in Newberry. But what other advantage might accrue to the town of Newberry by approving this article and incurring the associated costs? I submit the answer is there is none. While casting no dispersions on Mr. Landergan, who clearly has a good heart and cares for the younger citizens of the town of Newberry, the existing data demonstrates conclusively that this article will not improve pedestrian safety in the town in any way, and I urge you to vote this down. Thank you.
Okay. You up? All right. Anybody else that wants to speak, would you come up here, please, and get in line so we know where we are? Okay, thank you.
Hello. My name's Kimberly Popolo, and I'm at 65 Larkin Road. I was actually born in that home, and now I own it, and I'm hoping to spend many more years there. There are two points that I do want to bring up that I don't think have been brought up. I started driving on Larkin Road, and when I started driving at 16, the road was not paved before my home at 65. It was dirt. It was very hard to travel on. You had to reduce your speed because you would kick up huge rocks, and it would be very noisy and pretty dangerous. So people really reduced their speed due to it not being paved. I know that for a fact. I actually also wanted to point out that Larkin Road is often used as a cut-through to Triton, and that's a lot of young drivers that are cutting through that road. Because if people are coming from Rowley or Salisbury and getting off of 95, they cut through Larkin Road to avoid a lot of the traffic accumulating in front of Triton. So that's a lot of more drivers that would cut through Larkin Road, and that's a lot of drivers who are young drivers. And now that it's paved, I'm going to assume that a lot of them are going to fly down the road. So that's one point I want to make. The other thing is, I do have a question. On the document that was handed out, it says remains open in regards to the discontinuances or changes or all the wording that you were speaking of. Today, the road is not open. You cannot drive through it. So I do not understand this verbiage that's being used as if this road is still being able to be driven through. It's not open. They're still working on it. So how are we, what is that discussion for? Could someone please clarify?
Because the road, because the road has not been legally or technically discontinued or altered, it's still considered an open public way? it's still considered an open public way?
Leslie Matthews, 111 Main Street.
Excuse me just for one second, I'm sorry. There is a timer up here, everybody can see it. And try to do the best you can. Now certainly, if you get more good information after that two minutes, I'm not gonna cut you off. But try to be respectful and try not to repeat things that have already been covered. Thank you.
If it's stated at the beginning of the road that it's dead-end, then it's a dead-end road. Just if it's a through road or it's a cul-de-sac or anything of that matter. That's the description, and that's how it's laid out on the maps of the town. The reason for us to be here this evening was to examine why the vote of the will of the people was overrode, written by the select board. The people spoke, they said what they wanted, and the town disregard, the government of the town disregarded the will of the people. It will not make an impression for the will of the people to come out and cast their votes in any positive direction going forward. Thank you.
So just to reiterate what the chair of the finance committee said, the vote at the Springtown meeting was an appropriation for a gate. There's a very specific method by which a road is actually discontinued under Chapter 82, Section 1, and Chapter 82, Section 21. And where there is a requirement that it's within 500 yards of an adjacent community under Section 21, town meeting has to vote, and then you have to follow the process under Section 1. So that's the process that you're here for this evening.
Hi, everyone, I'm Alicia Greco, Chair of the Select Board. I think there's some confusion, or I know there's some confusion, the to discontinue the road from travel, being traveled upon is outside the scope of the authority of the Select Board. The Select Board cannot by law vote to discontinue or abandon a road. It has to be a vote of town meeting. So when it's within 500 yards of another municipality, I have stated that to Mr. Lundgren, I have stated that to Mr. Maida, and for some reason, they just don't understand that to vote, for the Select Board to take a vote, it's an illegal vote. It will do nothing to advance this process forward. The only thing that can advance this process forward is a vote of town meeting, which is why we're here tonight. So to say that the Select Board isn't listening is not true. Thank you.
Wanna come up? Okay. One minute.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bob Ross. I live at 48 Central Street on the corner of Larkin and Central. And just a little bit of my background. So this is my 37th year of publishing mathematics, computer science, engineering books for academics, okay? So I just felt like I had to kind of correct some of the numbers that people are using. So with all due respect to Chief Lucy, if you project his numbers out, it's actually a 40% reduction in the same period of time if the road stays closed. Okay? Also, I would say that incidents where the police are involved do not involve traffic backing up at the corner of Larkin and Central Street. That's not necessarily a police incident. That's another form of traffic. To use traffic violations to estimate the number, amount of traffic on the road is fine, but it's not the only calculation that can be used. Secondly, I would say the logic that says that if we close Larkin Road, it's gonna make the rest of the town unsafe is specious at best, okay? That's, I don't know, that's not a logical progression that I can follow, okay? So there's a number of factors coming into play. Speed limit, width of road, traffic, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's fantastic that we haven't had an incident in 50 years, but I think one's too many. And so we don't have to necessarily be reactive. We don't have to wait till there is an incident. We can say, let's take whatever steps we can to prevent an incident from happening. And I think that's what we're really talking about. I just have a quick question. Is it possible to make a motion? Can somebody make a motion at this meeting? To just make a motion to amend the, okay? All right, so finally, I'd like to make a motion that we do include access for emergency vehicles when the gate is installed. The guy can take the vote. Anyway, thank you.
Has to be alright. Yep. Next, please.
Jack Ribicki, 37 Larkin Road, Byfield, Massachusetts. I'd like to speak first to my friends, the chief, Chief Jamrin and Chief Lucy, and they are my friends. In your infinite pursuit of our public safety over the same last years that this, our Larkin Road has been closed, have you at all advocated to the Select Board or to the FINCOM for the opening of the road in concern of our safety for those eight years, besides the Georgetown developers? Was there any ever advocacy for us directly in these same eight years? Thank you. The bus stop and the bus concern. I too spoke to Brian Forgett. I also spoke to Kimberly Pershuti. She's the general manager of the bus company that serves both towns. There will never be a bus that'll go down Larkin Road. It's 16 feet wide, it's illegal. A bus with children in it will not go backwards and does not, unless it can turn around safely going forward, will not ever pass onto Larkin Road, nor will one ever go on Parish Road either. I'm sorry, Kim is not here this evening. She lives on Larkin Road, so she's a pretty good source for the information. And I'm sure she would also be able to back that up accordingly. As far as the 500 feet of the boundary concern, I believe the spirit of the Larkin Road group is clear that that gate would be at the Wheeler Brook crossing and nowhere near the front of Central Street. To insinuate otherwise is crazy. We want everyone on that road, just as they are now. The road's been a dead-end. The gate will improve safety, and it will benefit all of us here today. As far as insurance goes and their concerns, it would be hard for me to understand how our, the town insurance company hasn't had a big uptick in our charge because it's been closed and there has been no access for public safety. To insinuate our insurance rate's going to go up because we're offering emergency access seems, to use my friend Bob's term, specious. And I don't believe it. I think there's some false notions that get passed, but I think more than anything here tonight, the spirit of what this group is trying to accomplish is trying to be hijacked, for lack of a better word. I think the spirit of the will of the people is here. It's the will of the Select Board that isn't aligning with the will of the people that's the problem. And I think that's why we're here tonight. Thank you all for coming.
I'm sorry, just, we're gonna have to deal with this amendment, requested amendment first, and then we'll come back. We have to vote on the amendment, whether to pass that or not first, and then we can go back to the actual situation itself. But Robert has asked, let's see if I can, I don't want to misquote him here. He's asked that we just add in this amendment to, does it say to add? Except for emergency vehicles. Basically, we're just adding back in that, which was the intent, I know right away, Justin, anyway, I know that was the intent. But to have it actually be, you know, a motion to change the previous amendment, previous. I'm sorry? What's that? How's that? That good? All right. So what we're doing here is we're just saying we are adding back in emergency vehicles. So it'll be excluded except for emergency vehicles. So. Get it up? All in favor of adding the language that we are allowing emergency vehicles? Second, okay? All in favor of that, which would? Right, one yes and two no. So a yes is we exclude, or excuse me, we allow emergency vehicles. Two is we do not. Okay, let's vote. We've got 15 seconds, I believe. Is that working?
My, uh, my vote's not working?
Let's go again. Okay. Yeah, clearly, people want to add that, which I think, again, was the intent right in the first place. So thank you very much. Okay, where's that young lady that I? Okay, thank you.
Hi, everybody, Melissa Goldner. I am actually at 19 Pearson Drive, and I just wanted to get up here because I know that we hear a lot from Larkin Road. I have nobody living on Larkin Road in my family. I am on the other side of Byfield, and I just wanted to let you know that I also support the gate. I have driven down that road. It's very narrow, and many of you probably have. I am also a little bit distraught with the lack of action on the Select Board. I know that Ms. Mead has spoken several times about the legalese aspect. I think we all know that the intention behind the original article was to put the gate up, which passed overwhelmingly at town meeting. Many of you have probably known that Pearson Drive has also been engaged in battle with developers and taking advantage of the town of Newbury and increasing traffic on our roads. And I think it's time that we put our foot down and make sure that we are putting the safety of our community first. And I think that especially with this amendment for the emergency vehicles, that goes a long way. The other piece is the conservation aspect. And I am disappointed to not see the Conservation Commission represented up here because since this road has been closed, I think anecdotally, we can say there's been a significant increase in the wildlife population over on Larkin Road. And our wetlands are decreasing astronomically. We don't have many left. We need to protect what's there. So I urge you to vote in favor of the gate so that we can limit the traffic flow to just emergency vehicles and protect not only the children, but what beautiful wetlands and ecology that we have left. So thank you very much.
Okay, so the drugs are wearing off, so let's see if we can get through here. Please come up. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle O'Gerry. I'm at 30 Cottage Road in Newbury, and I just have a couple of questions. Sorry, can anybody hear me? Okay, so I'm Michelle O'Gerry. I'm from Cottage Road in Old Town. And I just have a couple of questions. So on this sheet explaining the process that we're going through here, under number five, when it says if Georgetown does not concur, sends no response to Newbury, Newbury may request the administrator of the highways for DOT. So I have three questions. Question number one is, it's, I know this isn't a legal document, but it says Newbury may request the administrator of highways. So my first request, or my first question is, if Georgetown does not concur or opposes, will Newbury request from the administrator of DOT? Or is there a possibility that that will not happen? And what's the, what happens then? What's the process then? And who, when it says Newbury may request, does that mean another town meeting? Does that mean it's the discretion of the Select Board, or what? My next question is, if they request from the administrator of highways for DOT, what is the likelihood that mass DOT will allow this to happen? Is there any precedence in the past for this to have happened? And what was the result when that happened? And that's what I want to know.
I can answer part of that. So it says may request because that's what the statute says. So Georgetown has 90 days to either to say something or nothing. If they concur, as Erica said earlier, then the road is altered slash discontinued. And then the selectman may request. I don't know the numbers of how many times where there's one community that wrote, once a road discontinued and another community that doesn't. I don't know what the track record is of mass DOT. And I don't know what the board of selectmen would do. They would have to take that vote, and they can't take that vote right now because they don't have a posted meeting to do that. But it would be with the board of selectmen, not with town meeting.
Dale Williams, 12 Scarlet and Heights Drive. I don't stand here totally in favor of putting up the gate or totally against it. I think people need to stand back, look at this at more 20,000 feet, and say, do we have a safety issue on all of the roads in Newbury? I know it's already been addressed to a degree, but honestly, I can't even ride my bike down Scarlet and Road with all the truck traffic going to the Newbury Port, the industrial park. It's a safety issue. They go faster than the speed limit, and it is not a safe road. But I don't think we've had a lot of incidents. I don't think Main Street, Byfield, is the safest road with all the turns. And I don't think Coleman Road is that safer road. And they carry far more traffic, as does Scarlet and Road, than Larkin Road ever will see. So to highlight just Larkin Road based on the residents of that road that want to put a gate up to make it not a throughway, I just don't think we're looking at the big picture enough. So I would ask people to stand back, look at it beyond just Larkin Road. Are our roads safe in Newbury? Well, based on the chief's comments, yes. But why are we gonna close one road in town that's not heavily used? Thank you.
I had an internal debate on whether I was gonna say anything tonight. My name is Bud Kelly, 24 School Street. A very busy road, a remarkably busy road. I grew up on the street. I was 11 months old when I moved there. It was a cow path. It was about this wide. It is now the main road to get from 95 to Route 1. I can't turn into my driveway waiting for three or four or five cars to go by. I'm right at the entrance of the Triton High School, so imagine what I get to hear every single day. But I love where I live, and I accept the fact that it is the road that it is and that it has become over time. I traveled Larkin Road as a teenage driver, as a 20 and a 30, and even a 40-year-old driver before it was closed. It was convenient. My shop was over at Jackman Street. It was super great to be able to go into the minimart real quick or get on to 95. Passing at the speed limit, of course. I am not for or against, but I will simply say I don't like, as I was sitting there, and this was the debate I was having, that there is a feeling that this has become a political thing because I was here at the Spring meeting. I was here when Lisa Mead said you would need to get an agreement from other communities who can approve their funding, and that's all we're doing. We can't approve anything after that. That was stated plainly and clearly at that meeting. I have changed my mind. I would love Larkin Road to open up again. I'm sorry, I walked down it. Roads changed. The bridge died. Didn't have funds to get repaired. Georgetown found a way to get it paid for. Open the road. Sorry, guys. Open the road. Sorry, guys.
Okay, folks, we have one more person that was in line, so that'll be it. Thank you.
I'm Catherine Delay, Elm Street. So I guess my questions are very specific. When you talk about making this change and you talk about, I know you spoke to definitions of alteration and discontinuance, and I listened very carefully and didn't understand. Um, so my question is, what is the impact on the town in their responsibilities for caring for a road if the road is discontinued? If you put the gate up, does that make the road discontinued? If it's discontinued, does the town have to take care of the road? I, I don't understand how that lays out.
Sure. So if the road is discontinued, that section that's discontinued no longer has to be taken care of by the town. And as I showed on the map, it would appear as though the intent is from the gate to the Georgetown line, that would be the area of discontinuance. And so the town would no longer have to take care of that area.
Okay, folks, I think we're ready. I think we've heard all of the arguments, and I think we're ready to vote. I think we're ready to vote. Something you haven't said already?
Why would the town discontinue that section of the road? What's the intent, what, where's the, where's the, what's the intent of that? What would be the benefit? Is it punishment?
That, that's, that's what happens with the law. When you alter a portion of the road that is no longer used, it becomes discontinued. I've already, I've already went through that.
Can you please help us write this so that it achieves the intent we have been working with? Please. Are you our representatives? I'm sorry, I'm Catherine Lundgren. I live at 38 Larkin Road. And
Thank you.
I feel like our, we are fighting ourselves.
I think we're ready to vote.
This is getting insane.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've heard all the arguments. I think the people that gave those arguments did a very good job, very effective job. There shouldn't really be any ambiguity about what we're talking about here. So. A yes vote would be to put the gate up, correct? We have the funding for it. A yes vote would be to put the fund up. And it would require to start the process of putting the gate up. No vote would be to not start that process. So let's do it. Let's vote. Okay, folks, thank you very much. The, uh, the meeting is adjourned.